Hello, everyone. So I'm calling the City Council Appointment Committee. To order at four o'clock on Wednesday, 12:22. Present are the other members of the Appointment Committee, Erica Flood and JP Kuzinski, myself, Lindsay Rothschild. I also see residents Marty Klein and Tom Brown in the room, in the Zoom room. As there, we have some minutes to approve, so we're gonna take care of that first. Does anyone want to make a motion for the minutes we have? Am I forgetting anything?
No, but I, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from, if I could just, I'll do them all in one bunch, is September 15th, 2021, November 10th, 2021, and December 8th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor, Erica?
I'm an I.
JP? Hi. So the minutes are accepted into the record.
And officially, thank you so much for getting those done.
Yes.
Of course, of course.
Barb will be happy.
To think of this task, yes, but necessary. So we have a lot of reappointments today and new appointments. I'm gonna share my screen to keep us organized, keep me organized anyways. Well, first of all, is there anyone from the public that wants to say anything that's not on the agenda? I don't think so, but.
May we move to anyone present?
Yeah, I'll move to, I'll move to the people present first. So I'm gonna start with a new appointment. There's two people present. So I'll just go through the new appointments first that are here. Rachel Phillips for the Aquifer Protection Committee. Hey, Rachel. So we have a different process probably than last time. I know you've been serving on city committees, but we just go through a few questions. The first is, why are you interested in joining this committee?
Well, I think the water is a wonderful resource that we have this aquifer, and I think that it's something that should have a committee that protects it. This committee has not met, and I
We're losing you. Your volume, we lost, yeah.
Yep, I see you're speaking, but I don't
We see you speaking. It seems very important, but we can't hear you.
I think it might be an internet connectivity issue.
Okay.
Oh, can you not hear me?
I was good before, but it sounded, seemed good.
Your, your question did, can you hear me was the last thing, the only thing we heard.
So I think that our aquifer is a wonderful resource, and it certainly deserves a committee that would, you know, take care of it. The committee hasn't met in quite some years, and there is no administrative code for it presently. I've met with Michael, who does work for the Water Department, and I have taken a tour of the facility as well. I'm very interested in our water. I know we've had some stuff happen in Westfield, and I really think that it should have a committee that's, you know, monitoring it and, you know, upholding our natural resource in a way that it will be sustainable. So I'm interested in it for a lot of reasons. So my first job out of college, I worked in the Department of Ichthyology at the American Museum of Natural History, and ichthyology is fishes. So I have a lot of experience with aquaculture and people in that world, and I can navigate through that, and I'm able to read guidelines and understand protocols, and I'm interested in creating a committee that will be responsible for keeping our water as a great resource to East Hampton.
Well, that's, that's great to hear. I did not know that they hadn't been meeting, so that's interesting.
Yeah, and there's no administrative code either. It will need to be written. Michael and I have talked about it pretty extensively.
Okay, great. So you mentioned some qualifications that you have. What other skills and qualifications do you feel like? Is there anything else you wanted to mention? There's not, you don't
Well, I, I've chaired a city committee now for over three years as well. I still chair the Cultural Council. I've also been on the East Hampton City Arts Council, so I have experience. And I rewrote the administrative code for the Cultural Council as well, so I have experience with that. And I feel like, you know, I, I could be of some value here.
And see, now you, again, you've kind of answered the same question already, but is there any other ways that you engage with the East Hampton that you want to talk about today?
Well, I'm also interested in our MS4 permit. I think part of restructuring our city water, though the infrastructure is different than the Aquifer Committee, part of the MS4 permitting is to, is outreach and creating understanding with the citizens of why our water infrastructure is important and why it's changing. And I, I'm interested in that as well. There are other components to this that I think could be combined with some more knowledge about the water.
Great. Erica or JP, do you have any fellow questions?
Yeah, I'm just thrilled. You, it sounds like you understand the lingo. You've talked to Mike, you've had the tour. You had great experience with writing administrative codes. I'd say you're hired, but
Well, I'm looking forward to it.
My only question, does, does this make, will this make Rachel a one-person committee? Is there anybody on the committee, but, and it's just
Yes. No, it hasn't been. So Michael's technically on it because it requires someone from the Water Department to be on it. We actually have a third member who submitted paperwork after I did. I submitted my paperwork actually almost two years ago. But he is a retired geologist from Smith College, and he was at your last meeting, I believe, put through.
Yep.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure, yeah, because I thought I saw that, but so there's been two people. Well, Michael's been it, is from what I'm understanding. So now you will be a body of three.
Correct, and the minimum is a body of three, is three. That's the minimum requirement to me.
Well, thank you very much for stepping up and reviving this. It's super important. Appreciate it.
I look forward to some tours, like
Just so no one thinks that the city is unconcerned about its water. I, I know that for many years, the Barnes-Aquifer Protection Advisory Committee, BayPAC, had been the organization overriding the entire aquifer, making up the towns, I think, of Coyle, Westfield, Southampton, East Hampton, and I think even additional communities, although I can't name them off the top of my head, that share the Barnes-Aquifer. So I know that group was active, and I thought that they were 20 or 30 members on that, and it was something that was kind of overarched by the Pioneer Valley Regional Planning Commission or Pioneer Valley Commission, but that all dissolved recently.
Yes, it is true, but they, they too have not been meeting for quite some years. It's true. When I first found out about the committee, I went and I looked at exactly all of the oversight that was happening, and somehow it seems when whatever happened in Westfield Air Force Base happened, a lot of change occurred, and somehow some of the things sort of became different. So I'm really looking forward to bringing this back to the people of East Hampton and giving them, you know, more access to it.
Excellent.
Great to hear. Thank you, Rachel. I'm gonna keep moving through our appointments right now, and then we'll do our, all our appointments as a group, our new appointments versus
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next is Marty, and he's here with us today, and I know you're so you're looking to join the Commission of Disability, which is awesome. And I, you, you wrote answers to your questions, but since you're here, we'll just, we'll get to hear from you, which is always a pleasure. So why are you interested in this particular committee?
Well, I saw the posting on Facebook that they were looking for some bodies, and I just felt pretty disconnected from the community that I once knew over the last couple of years here. So I thought this might be a way to get a little more reconnected. I'm still real active with Pasc comic. Being on the board there, but maybe I could help out the Disability Commission, given my experience with accessible trails and some of my other qualifications.
So do you have your qualifications listed here that? I don't know if there's anything you want to add. I think it's great that you're stepping forward. I know that Angelique was posting that and looking for some people that were gonna be active on that committee. She sometimes has trouble getting a quorum, so it's great to see you stepping up. So, yeah, you mentioned your involvement already in community and your qualifications. Is there anything, you have them written down here? Is there anything else you want to add?
Not really. I mean, I have some pretty bad back issues, and so I certainly relate to people who have some disability issues on that level.
Do you know when they meet? You know, when they meet, right?
I, there's, I think it's a January meeting.
Their meetings are usually, I can't remember, they're like at 10:00 AM on a day.
It's actually, it's the first Tuesday of the month at 10:00 in the morning.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Yep.
Cool.
So that works for me, because past comics meetings are the first Tuesday of the month, but it's seven, so.
Erica or JP, do you have any more questions for Marty?
No questions, just thanks for stepping up and helping out, Marty. We, we don't volunteers we can get, so appreciate it.
I hope I can be helpful.
I'm sure you can. I think people showing up and wanting to participate in a conversation is very helpful, just starting off there, and then anything boiled by me on that is really helpful for any of these committees showing up is.
I just want to say, Marty, I'm glad to see that you're getting out there and interacting with people outside of the Pasc comic trust, at least interacting on, on this tube here.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Thanks, JP. Good to see you.
Good to see you, Marty. Neighbor, you're my neighbor up in Stone Town.
That's right.
And we have one more new appointment, or two more actually. One is Ebenezer Afari Kumah. And he's not here, but he's a new appointee for the Community Relations Committee. He says he has a strong desire to give something back to the community and work with his colleague, board members, to promote positive relations through East Hampton's diverse population. Having been part of the community Facebook page and reading of nice posts, I can see the good relationship that exists among virtually East Hamptons. I believe that I can add to those relationships. In the public, if the public feels their concerns and needs are being addressed, they will have more faith in our city and board. The public already knows that I am trustworthy, honest, have integrity, and have their needs and issues of mind, networking, grassroots mobilization, public health advocacy, youth mental advocate, my skills, social media participates in Facebook, East Hampton, East Hampton Friends and Neighbors. I, the only thing I can add to this candidate is that when I was having the committee fair at Mill Pond, a couple people who couldn't go to Mill Pond but just saw the posting reached out to me, interested in joining a committee, and he was one of them. He's nudity, I think he's somewhat nudity in Hampton, and he wanted to get involved, so I pointed him the direction of all the different open boards and committees, and this is the one he was interested in, so that's, that's all I know, but you saw his resume.
The hazards of Zoom.
We'll move on to, I don't know, comments, he's not here, but his, his resume and application was in our packet from the, you know, from the meeting.
We have Tom Brown present. Could we?
Well, I just want to go get to John's, I just want to vote, just look at this, and then we'll move to Tom Brown, because I just want to have these in a packet.
Gotcha.
Gotcha. All right. So John Pepe, do you want to read these? JP, so I can mute my
I'm having a hard time seeing it. So if Erica and wouldn't mind, although I would be happy to read it if you could enlarge it. It's one of the hazards of eyesight. Ah, okay. John notes that he's interested in serving for, he has a particularly sense of urgency. "I feel for action on the local and regional and state level to tackle energy conservation, renewable energy, climate resilience. Every day, month, and year of inaction on these fronts means a harsher, increasingly chaotic and hopeless future for those who must make life on this planet in the middle of the later, in later parts of the 21st century." Must make a life on this planet, I should say. He understands the EAC is progressing on a range of initiatives, and he notes municipal energy, municipal light plant, and he says all these projects are exciting and important, and at bottom, I'm looking to make a productive use of whatever time I have left on this earth to fight for a humane, just, and livable planet. Seems like very worthwhile lofty goals and a commitment is the professional experience, I think, is quite interesting. Tufts University Masters in Environmental Policy back in '86. Academic study, 33 years working in solid waste management for the Barnstable County. Was on the Cape Cod Commission. Mass Development Department of Environmental Protection for eight years, and UMass for 23 years. Project management experience and extensive, let me say, extensive background. I won't read it all if that is okay, but interest in energy goes on, on with, I think, the credentials that we certainly could use on this committee. Ways you engage, very little so far. Just got into, into the community about a year ago, at, before the outbreak of COVID, and it's cloistering restrictions. Another person who I think has felt cloistered by, by COVID, as many of us have, filled out an online statement at the community center, but now he's been retired for 16 months, and with increasing opportunities for in-person interactions amongst those vaccinated and masked individuals, ready to, willing to contribute. So wasn't sure he could make it here today, but sounds like the kind of person who I hope will be committed to this project, and he would be working with some good people on the Energy Advisory Committee.
Great. So I'm going to, with those three, I will entertain a motion for our new appointments, which is Rachel Phillips, Marty Klein, Ebenezer Afari Kumah, and John Pepe.
I would move the aforementioned individuals. I believe they're all the same, 1231, 2024.
There, I have John Pepe is 1231.
2024.
Okay, is it 2024? Yeah, I have the typo on my screen. Sorry, I'm correcting that. I will second that motion.
All in favor?
I'm an I.
I'm an I, okay. We will know, one second.
Thank you for waiting for us, Tom. We appreciate it.
No problem at all. We can do these meetings from the comfort of our home. It's simple.
All right. We had the neighborhood kids coming to see if my son could play, and the dog was going crazy. All right, so Tom, good to see you. We moved down here to council on aging. And you're up for reappointment. Are you the, you're the chair, right?
Yes, yes, I am.
Yeah, great. So can you tell us about why you're interested in continuing to serve on this council?
Sure, thank you. Good to see you all. I have served on the Council on Aging Board, first appointed in 1986. I was actually, had the distinction of being appointed as a youth representative. And I've served on the board long enough to now take part in the programs that they provide to seniors. It's been a great run, and I, and I'll get to in a minute specifically why I'm interested in continuing, but when I started on the Council on Aging Board, they operated out of a small room at, on the second floor of the community center. And over those 30-plus years, we've gone from that operation to a building of our own, which is in the former post office on Union Street, and clearly grown in size and capacity and offerings to the senior population. I'm interested in continuing to serve because as we begin to turn the calendar here in 2022, we begin that year with a new director. A former director moved on to another position in East Hampton, and you know, Cindy Terrell, our new director, is, is a promising and refreshing addition to, to the Council on Aging, and I think Cindy's gonna be great, and I look forward to working with her. Also, we're on the threshold of potentially securing a new facility for the Council on Aging, which, which is a great opportunity, and that, that could very well happen in '22 or '23 at the latest. So I'm, I'm very interested in continuing, at least for another three years in that capacity. I have, this is my third stint in 30 years as chair, and I am hoping in the spirit of full disclosure, I'm hoping in, as we begin the fiscal year, July 1st, to turn that over to another board member who's, who served for a few years, Joe Banus. Joe's a great guy, and I've already talked to him about taking over as chair, and, but I would definitely continue to be an active and involved member of the board.
Great. You've answered a lot of our questions there, but are there two questions? If you want to speak to either of them directly, is what skills and qualifications you have to contribute, and what, how, what are other ways that you engage with the city of East Hampton? And you've already, like I said, I feel like you've covered some of those, but if you wanted to add anything else?
Yeah, just, just the background. I mean, I've served on, on a lot of different capacities. I recently retired after 45 years of banking, and proud to say that all 45 years of that banking was here in East Hampton. I've only lived in East Hampton for approximately 60 years, so I'm almost a native, not quite a native, but I'm getting close. I, I had the pleasure of chairing the committee that built the safety complex. I served on the committee that built the high school, and I've also had the pleasure of chairing the committee that is building a Mountain View School. I served on the Economic Development Commission from its inception, which was also in the mid-'80s, and continue to serve on that board, and I served on the, one of the master plan committees, and served eight years on the East Hampton School Committee. So I guess I'd like to think I have a lot of institutional knowledge. But again, I, I'm excited about our new director at the Council on Aging, and nothing against Brendan, the former director, but anytime there's new blood like that at the leadership level, there's always opportunity for advancing the organization and the group even further.
I think it's so great that just all the different ways that you've contributed to East Hampton, and now, I didn't know that. So for me personally, it's like, oh, here's a good resource in town when I have questions about different, different, the way different committees are working together, how the city works, that I know that you're a good resource, so I appreciate that.
Anytime, Lindsay, but if you want me to serve on anything, lose my number.
All right. Great. Well, it's great to hear about everything that you've been doing over the years. Anything to add, JP or Erica?
Well, I, if I may, I for one am saddened to hear, Tom, that you would be stepping down. I, I think you, you run a good committee, the Council, the Council on Aging, and I, I'm saddened to hear that, because I think
Well, just stepping down as chair, JP.
I understand. I'm sorry, sorry to hear that, that you're stepping, not that Joe isn't up for, up for the task. I think he's gonna do a great job, and he's had good mentorship, but you bring
I'll be here to work with him, and don't spread that around that Joe might be chair, because he hasn't accepted yet, but
We won't say anything.
It's only on YouTube.
Meeting.
Public meeting here.
So if you're watching, thanks for taking on the chair and
Here's the public pressure campaign, it's
There you go, there you go.
Yeah, I think you're building a sustainability, so that's good. When you, when you, when you create such a good you're such a good system and such a good workings that you can like step aside and it keeps going, that, that's just proof that you've done a good job to set the groundwork.
Well, when I asked Joe to consider being chair, the first question was, where are you going? I'm not going anywhere. I'll be right here, Joe.
Excellent. Tom, again, I just want to thank you for all of your time and commitment over the years to the city of East Hampton, and you have been a very gracious and generous resource when I've reached out to you in the past, and I just, you know, thank you, what you've done, and especially with the Council on Aging, you and your colleagues, is fantastic, and I, I can't imagine East Hampton without that organization, what the services that are provided to our senior community members is incredible, and I'm very excited to see the next rendition in a, in a new piece of real estate, so thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So if you want, since Tom's here, we can just do this one vote, and then go through the rest. Do you want to take a motion?
I, I move to reappoint Tom Brown to the Council on Aging with the term expiration 1231, 2024, and hopefully many more years.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor, Erica?
I'm an I.
I.
I'm an I, so, so we'll go, we'll be recommending your confirmation to the full council in January.
Very much, everyone. Have a great holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty, thanks, Rachel. You're welcome. I'm just going through all the committees. Okay, let's see here, so these are reappointments, okay. So agriculture. So a lot of these, which I mentioned in the last meeting, is I don't have contact information for, and I, and I've been going back and forth with Barb, and she promises me that we're gonna get an updated contact list for all the committees and boards, and one that can be updated, you know, regularly, you know, by sending to the chairs or something, but I do think that we need to have this, and I also think I've also, as I mentioned, looked on the website, and not all the committees and boards have an email address for the public to contact, so that was another thing I've requested. So I've sent emails to everyone that I, and some people responded, some people didn't, and some people didn't have their email. So these two in the agricultural commission, I didn't have their contact information, but does anyone have anything to add? I'm just gonna go through
I can, you know, I'm familiar with both of these applicants, candidates for reappointment, and they're certainly well-versed, and, you know, for me, a complete appropriate fit for the job, so just say, you know, no problem with approving, and I think they're more than qualified.
Okay, great. Now we've got Michael, he's coming back to the Aquifer, so that we can have our three people there, so that's cool. I think we already talked about that.
Yeah, fantastic.
Fantastic. We have Tom, we have Tom. So the Commission on Disability, I'm going to ask that we not vote on these today, because Angelique, I, I reach out, I also reached out to the chair of every, all the committees that are for reappointment, and she just said that, that she was supposed to meet with the mayor, I have it here, before renewing, and then meeting got postponed, so I think she wanted to have that meeting with the mayor before. So I told her we, I could delay until the, I counted out the 45 days, I said I could delay to the next reappointments. So I told her we, I could delay until the, I counted out the 45 days. I said I could delay to the next reappointments committee meeting. So that's all, the CRC, John Norman. I don't know John. Does anyone know John? I mean, I think most, you know, no one's expressed issues and all these people are contributing to the city, which is great. ECA, Theodore Perch and Tracy Eller, I'll just say all their names, Historical Commission, Michael, again, showing up in more than one place. Zerwick, am I saying it right? So Zerwick?
Zerwick.
Zerwick, Manhand Trail, we have Beth Sanderson. And then the zoning board of appeals, we have John Atwater. And he did write some, he's a senior member. There's many new members, so he wants to stay on there. He's a licensed construction supervisor, broad construction experience. And is chairman, he's also a member of the school building committee, and he's also been a member of the Chamber of Commerce and Coannis Club. So if there's, unless anyone wants to add any comments, if we can make a motion to recommend everyone except we're, I've asked that we just delay the vote on the Robert, the Commission of Disability members.
I have them separated in the minutes. So what, what I would do is I'll make a motion to recommend the list of folks excluding Robert and Bryce. And then my minutes will reflect, the motion was to recommend the above.
Okay.
I would second that motion. However, may I remove myself? I second, I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm an I.
I will abstain from Michael Zerwick. And vote I for the remainder.
Okay.
Just because there's a family connection.
Okay. All right, that's Erica.
So I'm gonna, okay, vote is.
And I'm sharing this document with you as well.
And I just want to note that abstention on that one. Okay.
Oh, we have to schedule whether or not we're gonna, we don't know. Well, we know Erica, so we're not going to hear. So thank you, Erica. It's been a pleasure serving.
Yes, it's been a pleasure serving with you all.
And we need to put a date on the calendar for the next appointment committee to meet so they can organize themselves, which may or may not include JP and I.
We don't know.
We don't know. It's all mystery.
I wouldn't want to say, because I haven't had the opportunity to say so publicly. Erica and, thank you so much for your service this, this past difficult year. I think you've done a great job and was very, I was very saddened to see that you didn't put your hat in the ring for reelection. So I'll put that on the record.
Thank you, JP. And this is not the last you've seen of me. Well, we have plenty of work to continue to do together and, you know, in my capacity, other organizations I'm involved in and perhaps down the road. So appreciate that.
Excellent. Glad to hear you're remaining in the community and an active part.
So, yeah. Do we want to put this?
I was gonna say, I've written next meeting date set for, did I, did I catch a date or no?
No, we have to set it now. This, this meeting is just an organization meeting. You weren't at the beginning of the term last time. So what it works is like, they just have like a five minute.
Usually, no, when I was going through minutes, I remembered our short organization. I came across those minutes. Instead of minutes, as clerk.
Yeah. So it's just, you, I mean, I say usually, I've only been here once when it was a person, but we all like right after swearing in or right before the reorgan, the first council meeting, we just like went in the side room and organized ourselves. But can't do that. So the, so what do you, we should probably put it on the fifth, right before that, the city council meeting or on the fourth or the third, I'd say. Do you have any, any thoughts on that, JP?
We could probably do an organizational meeting just before the city council meeting.
Okay. Point is, I know, it's like, I think.
We'd have to be sure we can get a Zoom account.
Right. And I don't know, well, we could just put it in if there's a conflict, because I, I think public safety, I was just in the meeting and I think they did 5:30 on the fifth. So we could do maybe five on the fifth.
That probably would be a safe bet.
Okay. Put on my calendar right now.
So January 5, 2022 at 5:00 PM.
Yep, January 5. Is that what you said?
January 5.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so that'll be fine. I'll just put 5:00 to 5:15. And that's it. This was fun. I'll take a motion.
I would move to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
I'm an I.
Great. Look at my little thingy. Okay, so this meeting is adjourned. I'll stop there. 40.